...of the last Gatos Planning Commission for September 11, 2013, where we have the roll call.
Commissioner Seauk.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Erickson.
Here.
And Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Birch have an excused absence.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Seauk, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would ask that everyone remain standing with the members of the commission. And we would like to have a moment of silence in memory of those peoples who lost their lives 12 years ago today, both as victims of the attack and those that were responders to those. So we ask that everyone join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process of the deliberation of all the town's business, and in particular, the deliberations of the Planning Commission of the town. That's essential to the Planning Commission being able to do its work in a proper manner on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written comments submitted prior to the meeting through the staff are always welcomed by the staff and are then included in the staff report that is distributed prior to the meeting. At the meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for the public to participate in deliberations of the council. One is when we get to the verbal communications part of the agenda, which is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any item which is not on the agenda for the commission on that evening. The second is during the public portion of the public hearing, where we would, where members of the public are given an opportunity to address the commission about agendized items. If there are people in attendance this evening who would like to avail themselves of either of those two opportunities, we would ask you to fill out a speaker's card and give it to the staff. They're located on the back of the benches in the chamber area. And give it to the staff so that we could call you at the appropriate time with the respective agenda items. We have minutes from the August 28 meeting of the Planning Commission that have been distributed to the commission by the staff in packets. Are there corrections, additions to the minutes, or a addition, or a motion to adopt the minutes, Commissioner Talisfor?
I don't, what, thank you. I have no corrections or additions, but I will make the motion to approve the Wednesday, August, um, wait a minute. Where are we? Twenty-eight, right, August 28, 2013 minutes.
Commissioner Talisfor has introduced a motion to adopt the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Smith.
And I'll second the motion.
Second from Commissioner Smith. Any other further comments? If not, on the favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, passes five zero. We have one written communication, one desk item this evening, which is for item number three. That was distributed to the staff. There are copies outside for members of the public. If you'd like to see them on the table outside. And we will see when we get to item number three whether we need to give anyone additional time to read the desk item. We have no requested continuances on this agenda this evening. There are no subcommittee reports for those committees of the town that the Planning Commissioners otherwise sit on. We would now move to the verbal communications part of the agenda. We don't have any speaker's cards from anyone of the public who would like to address us on an item which is not on the agenda, but we would like to give you, anyone's here, an opportunity to address us on any item that isn't on the agenda. Seeing no one coming forward, we will move forward. There are no items on the consent calendar this evening. So we will then move on to agenda item number one on, for the commission meeting this evening. It's a continued public hearing from the meeting of the commission on July 10. That's considering conditional use permit application U-13-005, subdivision application M-13-001, and architectural onsite application S-13-011, which is requesting approval to allow construction of four condominiums at 550 Hubble Way on a property which is zoned RM 12-20. Are there any disclosures by Commissioner on this item? Seeing none. Ms. Awol, may we have a brief staff report?
Good evening. The applicant has provided a detailed response to the comments from the commission at the July 10 meeting. And those are all discussed in the staff report. Staff does not have anything to add to those at this time. I did want to let the commission know that since the last meeting, two adjacent neighbors did come in and review the plans with staff and expressed a concern about privacy. Those concerns were relayed to the applicant. And the applicant contacted the concerned neighbors and is proposing a couple of window modifications. I have some drawings here, and when the project architect, Chris Spalding, gets up to speak, he'll address these in more detail. And I'll just go ahead and pass these around now. And we do have a couple of neighbors here that'll, that may be speaking this evening. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Awol. Are there questions for the staff at this time? Commissioner Talisfor.
Right. I did read Exhibit 13, the commentary about this, but I was curious, and I, and I've obviously read the staff report. But I'm curious, what is your general reaction to the assessment that we are reading in Exhibit 13 from the applicant? As far as street and road access?
The property has direct access from both Hubble Way and Avery Lane. And Avery Lane is a public right-of-way, whereas most of Hubble is still private. There's a couple portions of Hubble Way that is public, but the piece from University up to the property is private and will remain so. The town does not have the ability to obtain that right-of-way unless those adjacent property owners were to do some sort of development proposal. So I think we explained that fairly, in a fairly detailed way in the staff report. I do have an engineer available if you have more questions on that. I know there was a concern on the part of the Planning Commission that in the past, Hubble Way had been blocked by planters. If something like that were to occur, that of course would be a civil matter between the residents that have rights of access. But the property still has access from Avery Lane, which comes off-town terrace. So even if that were to occur, and they had to deal with that kind of circumstance, residents could still reach the property coming from Avery Lane.
Other questions of the staff at this time? If not, we will open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant. And I think Chris Spalding will be representing the applicant and give us up to five minutes of additional information.
Yes, Chris Spalding, architect. Well, I know this is recommended for denial, and we kind of had a hostile react, uh, reaction from the, from the commission last, last time. So afterwards, we went and looked at, at the minutes and tried to figure out exactly what you guys were, were aiming for. And if you look at the minutes, you'll see in that meeting, a lot of time was spent on the road access, which I don't, I don't think is really a problem. It seemed to be last meeting. A lot of time was spent on that this is a condo project, and yet we have four different buildings. No one ever said that, that the commission preferred to have a single eighties-style condo complex like an apartment block, but that was kind of the implication. And my client is not, is, that's not what they want to do. They don't want to do that style of condo project, but do what, what is popular these days, which is to try to make it more like single-family dwellings, which is exactly what you see going on elsewhere, in fact, across the whole Bay Area. Personally, I got three of those projects underway currently in Palo Alto and Menlo Park, exactly the same thing. I've gotten many inquiries for doing exactly this kind of project. I have never gotten an inquiry to do a four-unit eighties-style condo project anywhere. So it's just, it's just, both is not what people want. And at that size, it's not legally feasible because of the, you know, the tenuous nature of condos. So if you look around, you'll see that there are no small combined condo buildings being constructed anywhere. You have to get up to scale, like, something like, well, you see them around town where they're, they're large projects, where there's enough money behind them to, you know, to enforce, afford the insurance and the, and the legal backing, but also to have the amenities that make it popular. Like, if it's big enough, it can have pools and clubhouses and things like that, which on a four-unit project, what amenity could you have on a little property like this? That you could share, you know, logically? So all those forces are driving this kind of project to be as much like single-family houses as possible. And if you ask the neighbors, that's, that's what they would like to see as well, not a condo block as, as in the old days. And then further reading the minutes, I mean, there was some, some general comments about losing parking and having shared driveways. And actually, the way we have it now, there's a lot more parking for these tenants than there would be if there were shared driveways. So in many ways, this, this is a superior parking configuration for the neighborhood than to have shared Mew. Then the other, the other general comments, never any specific things, but general comments that it was just too big or too massive. But never a comment of, you know, could you make something smaller here or there? It was just like O'Donnell said, it looks, just looks big. But as I explained in my commentary, we do the same size building as a single block. In many ways, that will end up looking more massive as the buildings down Avery. I mean, if you drive up Avery and compare those existing apartment buildings to this proposal, with the story poles, this looks less massive. It's right there. And of course, is right behind this building is a three-story apartment building with a .71 FAR. And will, our buildings will actually somewhat screen that from the street. So we didn't, we, we made some modest changes. You have, you have a desk item there, the changes we were proposing to do for the neighbors to move the windows and shade the windows for their privacy. And we, we changed the rear units to craftsmen, so they're all craftsmen, to, to make them blend more. But as, as, as your comments from the last hearing, there was nothing specific for us to get our teeth in. So we, we didn't make significant changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Are there questions for the applicant, Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Spalding, you may have been somewhat frustrated with us last time, but I do note that you changed the rear properties to a different style. So clearly, you, you got some direction from us.
That was a guess, yes.
Okay. So as much as we, or at least I, I will just speak for myself, as much as I admire and respect you as an architect, and certainly Mr. DiMattei as a contractor, so I have no question that you produce quality developments. I, I still am troubled by a few things. So let me tell you what's not on the plan for me. I don't see the screening that is going to take place between the second floor of the house one and two in the back and the tamarack windows. Because as I stood and looked at the property again, I still see the second floor looking straight into the second floor of tamarack. Now, you talked about, I, I see now you have a desk item with frosted windows, but is that, is the whole back of each house going to be frosted windows? I can't quite tell it from what you've delivered to us.
No, that, that, that is for the houses that front on to University, not, not for the apartment.
Okay, so that's, even though it says House One and House One.
That, that was addressing the, the neighbors that are in the single-family houses.
Okay, next, okay.
Front University. And they came in and, and wanted us to address the privacy in their yard.
So maybe you could just address that landscaping issue for me?
So you're talking about the windows on the, the three-story apartment building behind us?
Looking into the windows of the houses, or we could say the houses are looking into the windows of the tamarack apartments. I, I just don't see a landscaping plan that makes me feel like there's going to be any kind of shading.
There, there is a landscape plan. The landscape architect is, is, is here. There's, there's trees being planted there and a hedge. Do you have the landscape plan there in your packet?
I have a solar study.
The landscape plan is not in this current set. It was in the original plan set that the Planning Commission got. So I don't know if the commissioners have the plans that they received for the July 10 meeting. It is in that set.
Well, you can just walk me through it, Mr. Spalding, and just say that there's going to be whatever. You have it there. Perhaps the, the more cogent question is, did you make any changes to the landscaping and/or, when you changed the design to craftsman of the back buildings to address the concerns of the tamarack apartment dwellers?
That issue never came up. Nobody ever complained from there about, about that privacy issue, but we have screening there. We have it, we have it screened. So we had, we were addressing that, but that, I don't recall anybody coming and speaking about that issue at the meeting, so we didn't make any changes. So we have, we have a series of trees and hedges across the back. And I also suggest that there's two stories of apartments looking down at us. We were more concerned about, about our privacy from them.
Well, no, I, I can understand. That's why I said it goes, I understood it was a two-way street of them looking down on you as well. Hypothetically, just one other ques, hypothetically, if you were to, had you been given more clear instructions, how would you have changed the mass or scale of this project?
Depends on what guidance you had given me. I didn't get any. I mean, if I did get a general complaint, like from O'Donnell that said, "It looks massive", what am I supposed to do? It's not really, it's just a general complaint.
All right, Mr. Spalding, thank you.
Commissioner Seauk.
Hello, Mr. Spalding. So based on the minutes, it does sound, it's difficult because while we're sitting at the meeting, at least I felt, I thought I conveyed my thoughts. But actually, having read the minutes, yes, I agree with you. Sometimes the specific direction isn't necessarily there. One of the things that I recall my issue was with was specifically the minimum lot sizes. Because if it were to be subdivided into four units, it didn't have the minimum lot sizes that the town requires. And so if I recall, my concern was, are we reviewing this as single-family homes where you don't have the minimum lot sizes? Or are we reviewing them as condominiums, which you're calling, but in fact are designed as single lot sizes? So you didn't have the, the common space because you had the private yards, you had the shared driveways. You didn't want the shared driveways because of the, you wanted the individual driveways. So I was having trouble reviewing it based on the criteria we have in front of us. I totally appreciate the creativeness that your team puts forward in what the current, I guess, current buyer wants. But I'm kind of, I'm stuck in the review guidelines that we have to work with. So if I'm looking at it as a single-family home, I'm still stuck with the dilemma that you don't have the minimum lot sizes. So when I'm looking at the findings that are needed for the subdivision map, I still can't make that finding. So again, if we look at it as the condominium, you don't have the community open space that's required, and you still have the issue of the shared driveway. So given that I'm looking at it through two different criteria, how can you point to something in our guidelines that would help mesh the two issues, given what the new prototype you're presenting to us is?
Right. So O'Donnell raised a similar thing, but he went further and kind of implied that we were trying to do something to skirt the rules. And that's not the case. This, this is, this is not single families. This is under the, the, as a condo project. And it's the same size structures and lot coverage. It's, it's meeting all the rules, the, the, of the zone district, the density, getting all the, all the same goals of the general plan. It's, it's just instead of having it in one building, we're separating it. So it's like you're hung up on, on the type of building versus, you know, instead of having a apartment block divided into condos, you separate them so everybody has, you know, more of a feeling of a single-family house. But it's not, it's not an R18 district. I mean, a similar thing to your PDs that are going on in town, which, which usually also has lot sizes that are smaller than the, than the zone district would normally allow. So it's, it's not.
I understand what you're getting at, and a couple comments. One, um, this isn't a PD, so we have to review it in a separate methodology. But one issue is looking at, again, looking at it again as a single-family home.
It's not, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's single house, single driveway, single yard.
Yeah.
You don't have the lot sizes. Have you considered reducing it to maybe three so that you do have the minimum lots?
No, it still wouldn't be the minimum lot size for the zone district. I mean, you couldn't subdivide this into three, three parcels.
Okay. Well, you answered my question. Thanks.
I mean, it's achieving the, the goals of the zone district.
Commissioner Talisfor.
So you're calling these condos, but they're in fact detached condos. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, exactly.
Except that if I understand a definition of a condo, a condominium, it is the ownership, not the design.
Right, exactly.
And I'm thinking that when we look at, that we can't really consider the four, we can't look at the design of the four houses at this point until maybe you could establish with me that there is something shared about the ownership of the land. Is, is that true?
Yes, it's still a single parcel. And with the, the way that's divided, the, the, like in a condominium, are you familiar with a condominium map?
That's.
Where they do a three-dimensional space that everybody, that you each own?
Yes, I want to know.
Yeah, so it's the same thing.
What the owners share together? Do they?
Well, the, the, the only thing that they share. Well, the only thing that they share is the insurance and the overall ownership of the parcel as a whole.
Of a whole, although they have four separate...
Kind of exclusive, exclusive use zones, yeah.
Okay.
And the purpose for that is, as you know, condos are litigious items, and so by separating it out, so people don't have these shared things that they fight about, that that removes a lot of that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on Mr. Spalding at this time? If not, thank you very much. We would now open the public portion of the public hearing to any other members of the public that would like to speak on the topic. We have two speaker cards. If there are other people other than the two that have given us cards who would like to address the commission, we'd ask you to turn in a speaker card at this time. So we'll call on Russ and Burbak. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Russ Ann Burbak. I live on 564 University Avenue. I'm directly next to House Number One and Number Three, I guess. My concern is about my privacy, actually, because next to my house, I have Tamarack Apartment, and it has many windows. Now, we have, these homes coming have eight windows, so I'm blocked with lots of people looking to my backyard, and I have literally no privacy at all. And as I talked to Chris on the phone, he was kind enough to said that he's gonna work out to make some of the windows, like frosted window. Then it was an issue of the bedroom window, and he said he wanted to move it, but I don't know whether they moved it to the other side of the building or not. I don't see anything tonight, but I like to see, obviously, I would love to see less homes, one story rather than two stories, but I can understand it is their business. Financially, maybe it's not visible for them, but as long as at least there's some kind of modification to the windows that I have, little privacy in my backyard, that would be very nice, because I don't like to see, the way it's situated, there is only two homes there. There is my house next to Tamarack Apartment, and the one next to me, which is on a corner of Hubble Way and University. And my lot is a little bit wider than the neighbor, so most of the windows is really toward my backyard. And the gentleman here, who's one of the owner, also nice enough to offer me that he can pay for some trees and stuff to build, put some trees in the backyard. But again, I really rather not to put any trees or anything, just to see either less homes, or one story, or the worst kind of two words, it's just that less window, or at least do some kind of modification, that I don't have more windows and more people looking directly to my house and to my backyard. That's all I need to know.
Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Ann Burbak? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Wiley.
My name is Chris Wiley. I live at 544 University Avenue. I'm right around the corner. I have a concern over this, because we already have houses that have been built since 1978 that are not on legal lot sizes. The house next door to me, the big yellow house, is not on a legal lot size. They do not own that driveway. It belongs to the apartment in back, so he has no place to really park. Now, next door on Hubble Way, what's been also going on is I have a concern for the noise. As soon as the land was bought, big trucks started coming in on all hours during the day, dropping dirt off, hitting sidewalks, going across sidewalks. When I talked to the drivers, they said, "Take it up with the owner," but that's not the point. That shouldn't have been handled that way. So I'm concerned about the future noise and the using of Hubble Way, which is a private street, for all this heavy stuff. That is a private street. You could tell because it's got a slant on the driveway, and that is a private street. Those trucks should not be going, commercial trucks shouldn't be going through there. The garbage trucks don't even go through there all the time. So this is a concern. You don't even sweep that street. When the sweeper comes, it stops at Avery and turns around. So I have a concern over that. I have a concern for the amount of houses because of the parking. Hubble Way is a private street. They're not allowed to park on that. People from the Bocchi Court, as you know, has been a big thing, so they're not allowed to park on that. Where is the parking for those people's guests gonna be? On University? Well, hey, folks, we know Los Gatos Bocchi has got that all together. It's not gonna be on my property. Is it gonna be further on Avery? Avery could hardly park what they have with all the apartments. So I have a concern. If he's building four houses, they have two cars each, which most family have, and then they have company. Where are we gonna put them in our back pocket? I just have a concern that, as I could say, you give them an inch and they build four houses. Well, at what point do we stop giving inches to build little houses? We already know on the corner, which was approved recently in the last five, six years, on a corner of Town Terrace and University, we crammed four houses in there. There's hardly any parking for those cars when they have company. Where's it gonna go? So I have a concern about Hubble with this, between the noise, the not respect with the truck drivers, and is this what we wanna do? Cram, cram, cram. And just let you know, that's a riverbed edge where everything shakes because there's rocks underground. So when those trucks and buses going into the Bocchi Court, they shake our houses. I think Russ will attain to that. And if this construction is gonna keep going, I have a funny feeling it's gonna shake the ground. That edging where they're building is more in the river edge, and it shakes more of the ground. During the earthquake, my house was ruined, totally rebuilt because of it. So that's another thing that we have to consider. You do a good job on other houses, so.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Are there questions for the Speaker? We don't have any other requests for members of the public to address the commission on this item, but we would give the applicant another three minutes to provide any additional information that they would like to at this time.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Howell. I live on Glen Ridge Avenue in Los Gatos. A couple of things I want to point out this evening is, we're dealt here with a property that's zoned high density. That's the zoning that's been given it. And so therefore, whatever project is built there, it's gonna have to take that into consideration. The four houses that are currently proposed are the minimum amount of houses per the zoning. We can only really do more legally, because our zoning is what it is. So I think we're losing perspective of that. Secondly, when we buy a property, we look at the neighborhood. We look at the, talk to the neighbors, and we look at what's been recently approved for this type of properties. We have a perfect project on Town Terrace that was recently approved by the Town Council that gave us direction for what they approved to be built on these type of properties. So rather than reinvent the wheel, we simply looked at what was approved by the Town Council and applied it to this property. Frankly, this street, excluding the single-family homes, which I think are very cute and reasonable, the big box apartment buildings there are, frankly, very ugly. And we don't want to do that. We think it's wrong for the neighbors, it's wrong for the neighborhood, and it's wrong for Los Gatos. Let us build something that we can be proud of and that people want to live in. People want to live in detached structures. They don't want to live in attached structures. I think we can all agree with that. We've taken a concept that's working in Palo Alto and Menlo Park and in Los Gatos and applying it to this property. We hope that you would have the vision to see that and approve this this evening. However, if you can't approve it this evening, we would ask for a denial, and we'd like to go to council so that we can approach them with this project. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Are there questions for the applicant? Commissioner Seauk.
Actually, I do have one more question of you, sir. I do recall the development on Town Terrace and University, and I recall one of the things that was being heavily considered in that project was economic opportunities, and you're correct. This is high density, and we can't skirt around it by doing single-family homes or changing the minimum requirements. But one of the issues for also of high density is providing an economic opportunity for people to buy into Los Gatos. And one of the things that I recall that we discussed was whether there was a price difference between buying a detached condominium versus an attached. And at the time, I believe the answer given to me was there's not. Yet, when these came on the market, and I did a walkthrough, I can't remember who was the listing agent, specifically, there was a discussion at the open house that I went to about the fact that it was detached, almost like a single-family home, could raise the price point. And so could you just talk to me about that, that economic issue?
Yeah, great question. And I'm an expert in this field, so it's a great question to ask. I'm not only a developer, I'm a Realtor. I think I know this market better than just about anyone. Great question. Those houses, as I recall, sold for 900-ish for the house. And you will typically, I think, on a condominium, perhaps pay a little less, but it does depend also on the amenities that they provided. But when you buy a property, a lot of it is based on square footage, lot size, things like that. There's a lot of variables that go into it. By doing what we're doing here, we're basically giving a person an opportunity to get into Los Gatos at a very reasonable rate and buy a single-family detached home, something they're proud of, as opposed to forced to buy an attached product that they really don't want to buy. The price point will be very similar, but they're gonna get something that's just theirs. This is gonna be an entry-level product for Los Gatos. Not to mention HOA fees, really, with all those amenities. They drive the price up significantly, so you may pay a little bit more, but when you add any high HOA fees, it tends to even out on a monthly cash flow basis for a homeowner?
Other questions for Mr. Howell? If not, thank you very much. We will now close the public portion of the public hearing, and I'll turn to my fellow commissioners for comments. Any questions of staff or a potential motion? Commissioner Boujwa.
Thank you. I'm sorry that the applicant really didn't feel like they got clear direction. I mean, we make an effort up here not to design from up here, right? We don't want to tell you, "Take down this roof, add this door." We don't like to do that. So we try, we were trying to choose our words carefully to leave you with enough creativity to get the gist of what our intention was, and come up with some, come back to us with something a little more creative, something that matched the spirit of the zone, which is, it's a higher-density zone, and it's that way for a reason. It was intended to be attached units, and I'm not attached to attached units. I like some of this creativity and diversity of the housing stock, but I really think we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, and I don't feel like, I mean, Mr. Spalding even stated, "We just made modest changes." Those are his words. And we had some pretty serious concerns about the density, about the bulk and mass, about the fact that this, you know, how do we make these findings on the subdivision map act? So I'm in agreement with staff on this, and I really don't feel like our direction was given much serious consideration, given the small changes that were made based on the extensive discussion we had. So I'm a little disappointed, but for the above reasons, I'm gonna make a motion for denial.
Commissioner Boujwa introduced a motion for denial. Do we have a second? Commissioner Seauk.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion for denial of the item before us by Commissioner Boujwa, second by Commissioner Seauk. Are there other comments by members of the commission? Commissioner Smith.
I'll just say that I believe Commissioner Boujwa has articulated my sense of the, what happened. As a matter of fact, I pushed last time, not for a denial, but a continuance with a level of confidence that we would see something different at this hearing. So we have not, and therefore, I'm gonna concur with the motion and the second, and I'm going to vote to deny it.
Other comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Talasfor.
Right. In review of the minutes, I actually really feel that aside from us not telling you not to include a door and put a window here and put a window there, that it's very clear what our intent was. And so I would have to disagree with you, which is why I will be supporting the motion.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion before us to deny the item number one on our agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to deny passes 5-0. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal it to the Town Council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. We'll now move to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing considering architectural site application S-13-057, which is requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence at 15680 Gum Tree Lane on property which is zoned HR 2 and 1/2. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who visited the property in our consideration? Everyone has. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? There are none. Ms. Avalon, may we have a brief report?
This property was created by a subdivision that was approved in 2007, and I don't have anything to add to the staff report, other than to let the commissioners know that I did have two neighbors come in to go over the plans with staff. Neither of those neighbors raised any issues verbally, and we do not have any written correspondence on the project. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Avalon. Do we have questions of the staff at this time? If not, we will open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. David Fox, I believe, will be addressing us. Please, for the record, please introduce yourself with your address.
Good evening. My name is David Fox. My address is 50 University Avenue, Los Gatos. What you have before you is our application for a new single-family home. It's a one-story home. We believe that it's well-articulated. There is no seller element on this home. It is essentially on grade. We put it on the flattest portion of the lot that we could, and it is all within the L-RDA. We turned the house in on either end to better fit the contours, and it is not visible from any of the town viewing platforms, and it is well-screened from the neighbors by vegetation that is going to remain in place. As far as the project area goes, we're preserving 32 of the 44 trees in the project area. There are many more trees on the lot, but not within the project area, and we are adding back in 35 trees. We have nearly balanced the grading. There is an existing driveway on the lot, and we have to restore that. Obviously, we have to take that out and restore the lot. So the soil that we're going to be moving as a result of the construction of the house, we can use to repair the existing driveway and bring it back into what the lot looked like, or very nearly what the lot looked like before the driveway was put through. And all in all, we are disturbing less than 25% of the lot. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Are there questions for the applicant at this time? If not, thank you very much.
Sir?
We do not have any speaker cards from anyone who would like to address the commission on this topic, so we don't see one coming forward. We would normally give you additional three minutes to comment on the comments from the public, so we would extend that offer to you if you have anything you'd like to add at this time.
I probably don't have to comment on my comments.
Okay, all right. We'll accept that. We'll close the public portion of the public hearing, and I'll turn to my fellow commissioners for comments. Questions, further questions of staff or a potential motion? Commissioner Smith.
I actually didn't have a comment, but that's okay. I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion. That's fine. So I will move to, well, first of all, I think the design of the home is very attractive. The owners and the architect have obviously taken into consideration the hillside guidelines, the contouring of the house, I think, is a very interesting and appreciative way to respect the nature of the lot. And so with that, even though this house is large, I took into consideration the fact that it was not visible by other neighbors. that it was not visible by other neighbors, and the respect for the property and nature that goes there made me conclude that I would approve the plan. So therefore, I will make a motion to approve architectural and site application S-13-057 with its address 15680 Gumtree Lane, and that the project complies with the hillside development standards and guidelines, that it is consistent with the hillside specific plan, and as required by the state environmental guidelines as adopted by the town, that the required environmental review was completed. And that is my motion.
A motion for Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second? Commissioner Bujow?
I'll second the motion. I'd like to make a couple short comments. It's a really big house on a really big lot in a neighborhood of really big houses, and I think it was designed clearly with an eye to the hillside standards and guidelines. And I think we all appreciate when an applicant comes in and has clearly paid attention to some of the details in that document. So I am going to second the motion, and I would only add that we are approving it subject to the conditions in attachment in exhibit three, assuming that's part of the motion, too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bujow. Other comments from other members of the commission? I, as Chair, would like to say, I absolutely agree with Commissioner Bujow's comments. He stole what I was going to say, so there's no reason for me to repeat it. So my congratulations to you. We have no further comments. Let's call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal it to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paulson. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing that's considered, will consider zoning code amendment, application A-13-03, which is considering adoption of amendments to the zoning regulation contained in chapter 29 of the town code to incorporate certain revisions required to implement the state-certified housing element. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner on this item? Ms. Rodonia, may we have a brief staff report?
Thank you, Chair Erickson. Erwin Rodonia, senior planner, presenting your staff report this evening. As you noted, the planning commission is being asked this evening to review zoning ordinance amendments that are required to implement specific actions that were required in the adopted housing element. After it was adopted by the town, state HCD certified the housing element after verifying that these specific actions were included as part of the draft approved by council. The action items are to be implemented with one year of adoption. Due to the late adoption certification by state HCD, their staff has advised that we adopt these during the planning period, which ends on December 31, 2013. Of the zoning ordinance amendments proposed this evening, seven are action items that have been included in exhibit one, which is the draft that's been attached to the staff report. The first of the action items is the option of a state definition for emergency shelters, allowing the use by right as permitted use in at least one zoning district, and it's required by state law. As part of the requirements for the state law that requires this particular action, the town is able to document the need for the homeless shelter and to establish appropriate local standards. As part of staff's preparation for this, for the general planning committees, staff reviewed the homeless census, and we researched the applicable standards with some of the service providers. That's why you'll see in the definitions, there's a specific limitation in terms of the number of beds, the hours of operation, as well as requirements for consistency with housing code and building code requirements. Item number two, in terms of action items, is a universal design reasonable accommodation ordinance, which would allow persons with disabilities to be able to ask for reasonable accommodation in terms of some of the regulations that the town has under the Fair Housing Act, both the federal and the state Fair Housing Act. Item number three is the adoption of a family definition that would bring the town in conformance with the definitions under state law and address potential fair housing issues. Item number four is the removal of the conditional use permit requirement that currently exists in zoning ordinance for multifamily uses and would allow multifamily use as a permitted use in the multifamily zone. Item number five is basically the adoption of a definition for transitional housing and to allow that use as a permitted use in the multifamily zone, and to treat transitional housing as a similar use. So if it were a small care facility, it would be treated as a single-family use in that zone. If it were a larger type of facility, it would be treated as a multifamily use in that zone. Item number six is a definition for group homes, which basically brings us into consistency and conformance with state law for defining group homes. And then item number seven is basically the definition for small family daycare homes and revising that to conform with the requirements for state law. The zoning ordinance amendments that you have before you are grouped into five areas. There's revisions to the existing definitions as noted. There's allowances for the permitted uses. There's the new administrative processes for the reasonable accommodation. And then there's actually the sort of nuts and bolts of assigning the specific duties to the development review committee, planning commission, and council. And then there's the appeals process for the reasonable accommodation provisions. As I noted earlier, exhibit one included with your staff report has the specific text changes. New text is actually shown as underlined text. Deletions are noted as strikeouts. That pretty much concludes my presentation. I will, however, like to go ahead and highlight for you that there was a desk item, and I can go over specific items of that.
That'd be great.
So the desk item before you this evening, it was noted, was communication from a town resident asking for clarification on four points regarding the reasonable accommodation ordinance. One was basically asking for what types of actions would be considered ministerial versus discretionary. In your, in the response that's included, staff tried to provide you at least two examples with the recognition that, given the nature of disabilities, you're going to have a large breadth of potential requests depending on the disability. There was also a question about the period of review being 45 years. That's basically staff's determination in looking at all the types of applications that we see and what we think we would need. It's something that's a little bit more than the regular 30-day type of review, but something less than 60 days that would be in the permanent streamlining act. And then the last two points were questions that were regarding disability. During the general planning committee review of the reasonable accommodation provisions, one of the committee members noted that they had attended a training and had a concern that the documentation that was noted to be submitted in terms of trying to clarify the nature of impairment, that these cases that were referenced spoke to that. The committee member didn't provide any specific cases, but just asked staff to research that. And in looking at the definitions under the Fair Housing Acts, both the federal and the state, as well as the Social Security Administration definition for disability definitions, that the town currently uses for the low-market rate program to establish eligibility for preferences, we found that the Social Security disability definition actually has more of a benchmark regarding a specific period of time for the disability. Basically says a disability that's sort of ongoing for at least the 12-month period. The Fair Housing definition talks about a record of impairment for a period, but doesn't specify what period. So it's a little bit more specificity. We still feel that it would be appropriate to use that as part of the reasonable accommodation provisions that's been presented. And that pretty much concludes my presentation on the desk item. Available for questions are...
Thank you, Mr. Rodoniaz. Are there questions for the staff? Commissioner Bujow?
Thank you. Just a quick comment, actually. As Chair of the General Plan Committee, I wanted to commend Mr. Rodoniaz on patiently guiding us through this page by page and line by line. I would like to just reassure my fellow planning commissioners who are not on that subcommittee that we did go through this quite thoroughly in those committee meetings, and you have a lot of expertise here in Mr. Rodoniaz to answer any questions. So I just wanted to personally thank Erwin for that.
Commissioner Seauk?
Thank you. And as a member of the General Plan Committee, we have reviewed this in complete, in very detailed review. And a question that has come to me in reviewing this, that I forgot to ask the first time, with regarding emergency shelters. So I know that we're only required to provide zoning, but given that we have 11 homeless individuals, have we had any problems where we've actually needed a concrete place as a shelter in the past couple of years?
In staff's review of the two censuses that were done, the most recent one being this past year, most of the individuals were reported as being homeless, but having some form of limited shelter. The definition for homelessness talks about being homeless or not having shelter for four consecutive nights. But on a regular basis for the better part of the year, those individuals actually had some form of housing. So there isn't super drastic need.
Commissioner Smith?
I have a question also on the emergency shelter, and I just wonder if you can walk me through. This does not preclude a church in town from having an emergency shelter. And what I'm recalling from a number of years ago was a very bitter winter, and the churches, and it may not have been here, it may have been in a surrounding community, which is why I'm just thinking this through, where they got together and they almost rotated shelter for three nights or four nights because of this bitter cold. So it does not preclude that, or does it?
What the obligation is for the town is to find a location in the jurisdiction that would allow an emergency shelter. So what the staff basically did was it looked at some of the criteria based on the potential need hypothetically in Los Gatos, and it determined that the CM zone or the industrial zone is probably one of the better places to do that. Your question is specific to churches. There's certain missions of churches as part of the religious duties that are protected. But if a church were to establish a full-time shelter, it would need to locate that in the controlled manufacturing zone. But something that was part of their religious mission, they have certain protections for. And this doesn't talk about any sort of emergency type of situation that would have been created that...
Right. I noticed that it does mention churches and conditional use permits, but that's, so it doesn't preclude it. However, if they were going to do it on a more permanent basis, they would have to identify a space in the zone that we have identified.
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. It was a very thorough report. I appreciate all the work that Commissioner Bujow and Commissioner Seauk, I know, did along with Erwin, with working on this. It's quite a lot. But I do have a question, and it was actually from the general plan committee minutes. And then it's also, you know, referred to in the zoning. But it's all, it's the definition of operating, of occupants that are operating as a single household unit. Can you explain to me, because it doesn't have to be the old versus the current definition, okay? So what are the parameters for that? What exactly is that? I was very curious about that.
So the current family definition talks about being related by blood or marriage. And as you can imagine, you have all sorts of households right now. And so that nuclear family, while it's ideal for certain things, that may not be the reality. So the definition that was created was in recognition of the fact that you have households that are forming, that act as a household or what was considered a family. And that's the definition that we tried to put in place. That definition also is a little bit safer, because there have been challenges to definitions in zoning ordinance that require groups to be related by blood or by marriage. And there's been some case law. Maybe the attorney may want to add in.
Just to add, while I don't have the case site in front of me, although my recollection proves it's either the Addams or Addams, some case out of Santa Barbara from sometime in the 70s, it goes back that the court had determined that if you operate as a family, you eat meals together, you do activities together, that the definition of being blood-related was not necessary, because this group of individuals operated as a family, shared projects, shared laundry, shared meals, things like that. And so the state then took the language from that case and then revised codes and adopted new definitions for the family to describe how people generally live together. And so we are bound and required under state law to modify our definition. We've been out of compliance for quite some time.
Thank you. I was curious about it. I, you know, our world has changed so much that I'm glad that we are more in compliance now and a little more liberal with how we interpret that. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? If not, if questions of staff? Okay. Commissioner Bujow?
This is more of a procedural question, so I kind of was trying to save it toward the end. One of the findings we have to make is that the required amendments were considered as part of the 2020 general plan update, EIR. Can you remind me, I mean, because, did we do that, and how did that get incorporated into that environmental review? Because a lot of these conversations about the details happened afterwards, so I just want to make sure I can make that finding that they were generally covered in the EIR.
So you had basically more of a programmatic look at this, and the draft that was looked at, you had comments during the development of that draft for which the project description was written for the EIR. And some of the comments from HCD were already in place, and that's what was used to develop that draft. And the requirements in terms of these specific action items were already there. It didn't tell you that, you know, specifically you had to have 20, a limitation of 20 people in the emergency shelters, but there was a state law requirement that said the jurisdiction had to have an emergency shelter planning process to allow it as a permitted use. So that was considered as part of that review. And then, as the attorney noted, some of these things go back a few decades in terms of the specific requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? If not, the Chair would introduce a motion to forward a recommendation to the town council for adoption of zoning code amendment A-13-003, based on the finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendments are required to implement the state-certified housing element and that the amendments are consistent with the town's general plan and applicable subaliments of it as contained in exhibit one of the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bujow, seconds. Are there further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you very much. Do we have a report from the Director of Housing Development, Mr. Paulson?
We do, and since our last meeting, Sandy provided the director's report. I'm going to have a couple more DRC items than normal, because we didn't cover those in the last one. So going back to August 20, the DRC approved an architecture and site application to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new one at 15755 Poppy Lane. They also approved another new home in the Shady Lane subdivision, as well as one more home at 88 Wissahican Avenue, which was a result of a subdivision that actually came before this body before. On August 27, there was an application for a single-story addition and a detached accessory structure on 17191 Buena Vista Avenue, and an architecture and site application for 16151 Short Avenue, which was to demolish an existing home and rebuild a new one. And yesterday, DRC approved two items. One was at 17101 Los Robles Way. It was an architecture and site application for grading permit for retaining walls, basically replacing an existing deck and then putting in some new retaining walls to add support to that. And the subdivision application for the Albright Way site was also approved at DRC yesterday. We've also had a council meeting on 9/3. Town council discussed adopting a policy regarding the public use of town equipment at town council meetings as well as planning commission meetings. That item was sent back to the policy committee to discuss some possible revisions that were discussed by various council members that evening. They also adopted a revised... They also adopted a revised BMP guidelines scoring criteria. They made some modifications when that went, Mr. Ardonez took that through. They made a couple modifications, but ultimately it was adopted. And lastly, they received an update on the conditional use complaint process and provided some direction to staff to bring back some additional information on three topics specifically outlined at that meeting. So that will come back to the Town Council, either for further direction and/or possibly come forward through the Planning Commission and then ultimately to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Are there questions? Commissioner Talisfor.
Right. Mr. Paulson, did I hear you say that there were some modifications to the BMP or revisions?
To the scoring criteria in the BMP guidelines. And those...
Could you just, can you just quickly give us an update on that?
Certainly.
That seems to be one of those mysterious things I can never capture.
Basically, what happened was that there had been requests from the community to include preferences for teachers. And so as part of the housing element process in 2009, there were requests. The General Plan Committee had reviewed some comments and requests for that. And then during the development of the teacher preference, staff also recommended a preference for first responders. So as appropriate tonight, 9/11, the town adopted preferences for first responders, police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical techs and paramedics, as well as teachers. In terms of the teacher preference originally, what was recommended was public school teachers. And then during the course of the review, that was actually broadened to school employees. And when the item was reviewed by the General Plan Committee, the General Plan Committee, based on some comments from the community, felt it was also appropriate to broaden that to public and private school employees of preschools and schools or districts that were located in or serving the town of Los Gatos. So there was always that service component for the preference.
That's very complete. Thank you very much.
Other questions for the staff? Just as a heads up for other members of the commission, there's a conversation that I've had with the staff about the potential of adding some additional special meetings between now and the end of the year. So they're trying to figure out when that might be and how they might structure the agenda, because there's a lot of pending items out there. So they will likely be in contact with all of us about having one or more potential additional meetings between now and the end of the calendar year. Any other commission matters?